Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and join Councilwoman Paget in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me, please? Our Father in Heaven, we come to you today thanking you for the blessings that we have. We thank you for this community. We thank you for the work and neighbors as they help each other from the storm and cleaning up properties and stuff. We just want to thank you for the camaraderie that this community has. We thank you for this season, Father, that Christmas and how this community stops and thinks about our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and His birth, and we celebrate it in many different ways, and we just want to thank you for this time that we can do that. And as we go through this month, Father, we just pray that all the activities that this community has really brings joy to the community as well as to our Lord and Savior. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Call to order our City Council meeting of December 1st. Number, second item on the agenda is public comment. We have one presentation for public comment. Mr. Gammel and Mr. Lomax, would you please proceed over to the microphone, introduce yourself and what your topic is that you would like to express?
I'm Jerry Gammel, and I'm with the Guthrie Quanis. This is Freddie Lomax. He is also. We're getting geared up. This coming Saturday is going to be our annual Christmas auction. And we just want to invite everyone to come out and join us. We've had a lot of donations from the community, and we're going to be selling them right here in these chambers. And you can watch it on GTV, right here on the city station, so.
We do this every year, as you know. We do it in this room. We want to thank the city for allowing us to use this facility year after year. This is our biggest and basically only fundraiser of the year. The Quanis Club operates on our budget based on how we do from the auction every year. Last year, we did three scholarships, and we did about $7,800 in codes for kids just last year. So that's our biggest one budget item. But we do a lot around the community with-
Easter egg hunt.
Hunt Pass and Kick.
Hunt Pass and Kick. Every one of our projects is aimed towards the kids in our community, so that's what every bit of the money that we raise at this auction goes towards is the kids, so we appreciate your support.
We have some great items for the auction for the big board this year. We have a really big gas grill donated by Ace Hardware. We have a Dallas Cowboys football package donated by John Vance, several sets of Thunder tickets.
If they better my team plays, they're not going anywhere.
But we should have up to about 400 items like we do every year. We kick off at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, Channel 20, and in this room, so we invite everybody to come out, bid live or call in and bid. It's a whole lot of fun.
If they want to call in, what's the number? Do you know the number?
I don't, actually, but it'll be on the bottom of the screen.
Good, good. We're going to test Aaron.
User-friendly.
We're going to test Aaron. And if anybody wants to donate something, can they still do that, or?
Again, they can catch up to me down at Oklahoma State Bank. They can call Jerry. He's with the school system.
New Cornwell, everyone knows him. Anyone you know from the Quanis group, get ahold of us. We're going to be at the Presbyterian Fellowship Hall Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday after lunch every day, getting things ready, so if anybody's got something, they can stop by there.
Great, great. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for what you do for the community and for the children of our community. Quanis does a great, great job. Support them, support them. Thank you. Okay, item number three. On the consent agenda, we have consent agenda items A through G. A is the approval of the past minutes of both the City Council workshop. B is the minutes of the regular City Council. C is the next calendar year schedule of regular meetings, all of the various city meetings. D is approval of our city canine, J-Lo, possibility of J-Lo working for another owner. E is the approval of budget amending eight different funds, moving amounts of money through eight different funds. F is approval of 0.22 acres of land by Lake Guthrie, Guthrie Lake. And G is approval to deny a tort claim, claim number 201156-KW. Those are the consent agenda items. I will entertain-
So moved.
I'll entertain a motion-
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Okay. Is there anybody here that's here to speak about item G, which is tort claim? Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of these items at all? Okay, please submit your vote.
I'll vote for it.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of all those consent agenda items A through G. Agenda item number four is the discussion of possible action on the Guthrie Park Board recommendation to allow a disc golf course project to move forward at Highland Park. And I believe we have a presentation to make. Kaitlyn, hi.
Hi.
Kaitlyn, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about this project.
Okay, well, as a Girl Scout, you have different awards that you do. You start out as just your bronze award, and it's just like a smaller one because you're a little younger. Then you kind of build up. There's your bronze, your silver, and your gold. And this is my gold award project. And I decided to do something to kind of help the community of Guthrie. And I chose, you had to kind of choose a, like a thing to kind of move towards, like a goal to get. And I would like, my goal is to kind of bring down child obesity and to try to get kids a little more active in the community. And so I decided that why not build, we have a beautiful park, and so why not take advantage of that and build a disc golf course in it so that we could have easy access to something that all ages in the community of Guthrie can enjoy. It's something that's fun, active, and very, very reasonable. And it's just a fun activity for kids to do after school, on the weekends, and it's easy to maintain. It's just, we just have to get it approved. And we have, in your packets that I passed out, did everybody get one of those? Okay, the first page is the advertising and sponsorship agreement. That is the one that I will pass out to someone who would like to sponsor my disc golf course. We're doing all of this on sponsorships and with the help of the community. The Parks Board, you guys, City of Guthrie is not funding me any money, so I would, I am doing this all for sponsorships and everything. And this is just the one that will give anybody who would like to sponsor, they'll sign it with, it has the price, it has how much they're going to pay for everything. It'll, then they will have their signature, I will have their signature and their phone numbers, so if we have any questions, we can contact them or anything. And then the second page is the contract to sell advertising. That is the one that I would need one of you guys to sign for the, that is for me to sell to everybody else, so that I can show them that I am doing this with the consent of the city and not just on my own free will. And then the next page, this shows the disc golf course. It kind of shows the packages of, like, the sponsorships, and it's my advertising page. And you can see, you know, there's different packages for everything. And just additional advertising, just however, whatever kind of sponsorship you kind of want to give is on this page. And on the next one, we have, this is the entire budget for this entire disc golf course. It's got, it has, you know, the flags for the top of the baskets, the baskets, the tee pads, has the benches, landscaping, everything that you can think of that would go in a disc golf course is on this page. And it has, I want to point out that on the budget page, it has the granite markers and etching. We have budgeted that around $5,000. And on this, on the next page, on the one that I got from Warren Monument, which he has decided, Asa has decided that he is going to donate, he has 23 slabs of granite that he doesn't use, and he is donating those to me and this disc golf course and this project. And he said that the only thing that we would have to pay for is the etching. And he gave up, he listed a budget and a, what's the word? Quote, estimate, there we go. Sorry. And at the bottom, the logo for sponsorship is an additional $150. That's not in the one that they, in the $2,000 that they included, so that's why it's $5,000 on this budget and $2,000 on this page, because we included, that's like, the $5,000 is for all 18, 19, however many granite markers we want to do. That includes the 150 for, to put your company logo on there, so. Wanted to point that one out. And then the Innovah Disc Golf Quote is on here. It has the, and this is the one that we got straight from Innovah. It has how much the sleeves are going to cost for the baskets, the additional sleeves, you know, for everything else, the basic tee signs, all of that is on here. And then Sean and Brian are here, Sean Turk and Brian Hibbler, they are the ones that are designing the disc golf course. They have drawn up a great example of everything. They have mapped it all out as to what we pretty much kind of think the red lines are pretty much where the holes are going to be and how it's going to be all mapped out and everything. The, a couple months ago, we, Sean, my mom, me, and my Uncle Randy, who is a carpenter, construction worker, we walked in blue with the Parks Board, we walked around Highland and walked around what Sean had kind of mapped out for all of the, all of the places that he had planned on putting the holes. And we found, we ran into a couple problems. We've kind of solved them. We've moved them around. But we have walked this entire thing, and we've walked back down into places of the park that I didn't even know were there. And it would just, it would open up the park to more people, and I feel like it would get everybody more active in the community, and I think it'd just be something fun to have for everybody. And then if Sean would like to come up here and talk about exactly kind of how the, Sean and Brian, talk about exactly how the thing will lay out, if you guys would like to hear that, exactly kind of how.
Okay, Mr. Turk.
Hi, my name is Sean Turk, and I'm a member of the OKC DGA, which is the Oklahoma City Disc Golf Association. I'm also a member of the PDGA, which is the Professional Disc Golf Association. This is Brian Hibbler. This is my co-designer, also both members of both factions. What I have here is, this is the map of the actual course that we have walked through. We did, like Kaitlyn did say, we had a couple of problems that were kind of infringing on the walking trails. We have moved the holes so they will not impact those walking trails. The course layout is 18 holes, approximately 7,000 feet from tee pad one to 18 basket. Each hole will range anywhere from about 225 feet to 450 feet. Wooded, open shots to provide different levels of challenge for starting out from, you know, your beginner golfer to a seasoned professional. So I believe that Kaitlyn is doing such a fantastic job on this and for the Girl Scouts and to, you know, to work on childhood obesity. And I think she's, she picked a great, a great project, and we'd definitely love to have this for Guthrie. And I know it would be a great addition to this great city. Would you like to say anything, Brian?
Does anybody even know about disc golf, anything about it?
I have a question.
Yes, yes. I have some.
First of all, I'd like to know about how much activity do you all have in Oklahoma City? What, do you have a big response from it?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Disc golf is growing at an astounding rate across the nation. When we have tournaments in the city, it's normally minimums 108 players per tournament.
And is there a level of difficulty that you can achieve beginner through expert?
Absolutely. You start off as rec as a beginner, and then you can work your way all the way up to professionals that have- Oh, I'm sorry. That, all the way from rec players to professionals that tour around the world. They now actually have a world tour going on.
Okay.
City of Emporia, just north of us here, about three hours, they've got in behind disc golf. And now they are going to be hosting the Disc Golf World Championships, Professional World Championships next year, which is going to break big revenue to the city.
Well, I'm excited to have something for people to do in Guthrie. I think it's really awesome.
And it's free to play.
Oh, cool. But I just wanted to know if it was, really picked up a lot of momentum and people were interested and-
Oh, it's one of the fasting, fastest-growing sports in the nation, if not the world.
Cool.
It is a great sport. It really is. It'll do the town great.
Have the two of you been involved with laying out other courses?
We're working on one down in Deleese right now for the city of Oklahoma City. We're with Oklahoma City Disc Golf Association Club, and so we're helping them out with the design of a course down there right now as well.
So this is kind of your first design?
First, yeah, just for our own. But our number one aspect is safety. That's what I was telling Maxine Prue, that's my number one thing. And that's where the walking trails come into play, because these are not your ordinary Whammo Frisbees from back in the younger days. These are actually high-tech Frisbees that can go at a very high rate of speed.
So it's not anticipated that there would be any fee involved with paying, with playing? Is that what I was hearing?
Exactly. It's free to pay, to play for the public. Now, we will hold, if we get a course in, we will hold what's called weekly minis, small tournaments, and then the participants pay $5 or $10 to play in that. And then they get disc back as prizes or something like that.
So where do you buy the gear, the discs and things like that for your-
Well, there's several different vendors that you can use. Right now, this is all spoken up with Innovah, and, but we can, we will have discs to sell there at the tournaments, correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Now, if you're starting off, I mean, you can buy discs at Academy. You can buy discs at, well, local vendors, Hibbett Sports and Walmart.
Thank you. Good. Okay, that's good.
I have a question. So once you get financing, how long will it take to build?
We are looking forward to spring, to have it in by spring.
We can have it in place by spring, ready to play.
Ready to play.
Now, on this other project that you guys kind of worked on, did you do some fundraising with it at all?
The club does fundraising with that as well. And, yeah, they're, they're not raising quite as much as us, but the course that's being presented to you right here is top-of-the-line, state-of-the-art, and that's what you want. So you want a course that's going to get the word out, and people are going to come and play. It's one of those, you build it, they will come.
Well, how was fundraising for that last project? I mean, was it tough to get? Because a lot of people don't know what it is, so I'm just wondering, is it tough to do, or are you pretty confident you can get this money by that, by spring?
That's out of my department. I'm just the designer part of it in far as the, but the money-
Kaitlyn, question. Kaitlyn, you're handling the money?
Yes. Well, the Girl Scouts are kind of handling the money and everything because every, we're gonna, I have talked to a few people already. They have already contacted me about wanting to already, you know, talk to them whenever they, whenever I get this in place and whenever I get this approved about sponsorships, and I have their names. Jeff Chapel, James, and Laura Long have talked to me, Gary Good, Cody Hayes, and Alan and Cindy Gould have already, I've already got five people that have talked to me about sponsorships and about wanting to sponsor.
So if they want to, if somebody want to write a check, they would write it to the Girl Scouts?
Yes, yes.
Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma is what-
And they would be, they're nonprofit, right? So it'd be a tax-deductible donation?
Yep.
You might want to note that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just tell us what your name is and then-
My name's Sherry, hi.
Repeat your statement, Sherry.
My name's Sherry, hi. I'm Kaitlyn's mom. Being a tax accountant, I have to be a little more specific to answer your question. Yes, Girl Scouts are a nonprofit, and yes, all checks will go through the council office, and then they'll come back down to our troop level, which I am her troop leader and her mother. And so then the checks will then be written from our troop account, but the council office requires an audit every year of our troop funds. And so those will be audited. They'll also be available for anyone who sponsors or the city council or anyone else to look at at any time. So we believe in complete disclosure there. But if it is someone who is doing a sponsorship and they don't have a business, and so therefore it's really just putting their name on that hole, then you are correct. By donating to Girl Scouts, they could write it off as a charitable contribution. If it's a business and they're receiving the benefit of advertising for their business, then it may be a deduction that way rather than a charitable. But it gives an option for either one as she sells those ads.
So it looks like, I mean, you're, the big part of this is placing these baskets, right? So what about signage? Are you going to have signage and maybe instructions for how to play and things like that somewhere?
Yes, and that's part of that budget that you have, so. In the, in the budget, we've talked about a practice hole or a practice area to put two or three baskets in there, just, just to kind of toss around, to warm up. At a, you know, real, at a real golf course, they have like a little, like a little tee putt area. It's kind of like that. It'd just be, you know, you just kind of toss the discs into the basket from a shorter distance, just kind of get your arm warmed up and everything. And so there would be a sign that has kind of the instructions and the rules on how to play.
One thing I did want to add is that I have the support of the OKC DGA as well. I have a number of players who are excited to get up here and help with the project, clearing out any dead brush, setting the pins, doing all that. So I'm very confident if this is approved, we will have it in by spring and playable.
Are there many trees that have to be taken down in this?
No. No, sir. Our main point, or our main focus is to eliminate dead brush. Any dead trees that have fallen, we do not want to take out any live trees. That's the main thing. That just creates the challenge. You know, if you have a lot of live trees in your way, that's going to make that hole just that much more challenging. You're going to have to find a way around it. So we just want to eliminate all dead brush, any overgrowth, anything like that, kind of open up the park and pull out all those dead trees.
One more thing. The, my little sister is in a smaller Girl Scout troop. They are daisies too, about junior age, and they have already agreed to help whenever we get the disc golf course in, to kind of help with the landscaping, planting flowers, planting smaller, like, trees just up at the front, just to make it kind of look a little more open and pretty. And they would also do, like, just as a meeting, to walk around and clean up or just whatever kind of needs to be done to keep it maintained, so.
You know, I was going to just, it looks like it's a pretty comprehensive budget. Who put it together?
My mom and me. My mom and me.
Based on factual data from you guys?
From them and from Innovah and just kind of from Asa and just everybody. We've looked online at all the other, at kind of some budgets that other people have had on their websites and compared it all and came up with the best, best estimate as to what everything would be.
So you can begin construction at about half of the money raised for the budget?
We could actually start clearing out holes immediately.
Immediately, yeah.
Yeah. And be getting ready for, while they're raising the money, we can be designing it.
Maintenance costs, an annual maintenance cost, what's involved with the maintenance? Is it going to be mowing? Is it going to be?
There would be just mowing. Now, occasionally, things happen. A basket could wind up getting stolen, something to that, you know, that would be the only expense, if something like that were to happen. But mowing would be your only main maintenance.
Okay, and Maxine, your staff have been involved with looking at that?
Yes, they have. I might add that this is not something that just happened recently. This young lady and these two gentlemen have been working on this for about a year and a half. And it's been to the park board twice. So we're all excited about opening up that park. We think it'll be a real asset to our community. And I think that my park crew is excited about having something new to offer the community.
It's a great way to utilize parts of the park that normally don't get to be utilized. And by doing this, we can have people go work the whole park area and use it. So it's a great benefit for the city.
Is this something we could, maybe someday, do something like Emporia? We could bring a championship?
That would take a little more, more parks, correctly. But they've really gotten in behind it, and I'm telling you guys, look up Glass Blown Open. That's the big tournament that they're going to have up there in, I think it's in the end of March. But it'll have over 900 players, just a one tournament. And then when they have Worlds there, they're going to be, you know, 1,500 to 2,000. And I promise you, that's going to bring in a couple mil to the city.
What other sites, what other sites did you consider other than Highland Park? Did you talk about the Elbow or anything like that?
Yes. Our last, the last city manager before Mr. Johnson was in, she had kind of discussed the elbow, but that was going to be a really expensive thing. We would have to build two, two bridges to get over to the, to the spot. And plus, it was already kind of open, and there wasn't really a lot to kind of go on as to building a disc golf course. And it, it didn't really look reasonable, and it didn't look like it would kind of work as a disc golf course. So, but that was, the elbow was the only other place we kind of discussed. Liberty Lake also as well. Yeah, at a later date. But then I also kind of wanted to leave it in town for, because there are quite a few kids who, after school, just walk around town or kind of go sit at Rick's or just kind of don't really, you know, they just kind of don't really do anything. And so I wanted to have something that they could do after school, so.
You mentioned the Worlds. What, I mean, that's probably a high-level course. So how does this compare to something like that?
Well, starting, starting off, it's going to be rough, okay, because it's going to take a little bit just to get the holes put in. And then once you get to playing it, the people themselves will trample it down and open it up. And it takes, of course, three years or so to develop, you know, to get to a higher level state. The course that we're building right now could have a pro tournament on it, as we're looking at it right now.
And Maxine, your people are already mowing these areas anyway, right?
Not in that particular area, but they are looking at it, and they feel like they can handle it very well.
One thing I might add is with the city of Emporia, they actually implement some of their golf courses as, as courses, as disc golf courses. They put temporary baskets in and use the municipal golf course or the country club golf course as a course. And then when the tournament is over, they take the baskets away. And actually, some, what is it, country club, they actually have liked it so much that they've put in permanent holes.
Permanent baskets in there because it's doing so well.
Is that what, this will be permanent?
This will be permanent, yes. I'd like to-
Questions?
Got a question. This is probably to you, Ma. The, you're going to collect $74,000, it looks like, from this budget through the Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma. Who's going to be responsible for paying the bills, the $74,000 expenses, and how's that going to be administered?
We had actually discussed this at one of our earlier meetings as the best way to handle the funds, that because of it being her Gold Award, the council office does like to see it actually run through the Girl Scout troop that that Gold Award member is in. And so basically, the checks would come in. As the expenses go out, they would go out. If there's any money left over, then all of the sponsors that are involved, if for some reason things come in under budget or we have more donated in the form of actual labor and things like that, that we had expenses budgeted for, don't use as much of the contingency at the end, things like that, then those people that sponsored the hole would have the option as to how that additional, how those additional funds were used. And so basically, it could either be given to the city for perpetual maintenance, or it could be used to maybe put in a second course at Liberty Lake, something like that. But that, that is the idea, is that every dollar of that be spent on either this disc golf course or a, you know, or additional courses for the city if, for some reason, we came in way under budget of what we have expected.
For some, I always hope for the best and plan for the worst.
Correct. And that's why the budget was set up that way with a contingency and with budgeting as many of those things in there originally.
What, what if only half of the money was raised? Would you go forward with the project, or would the money be returned to the sponsors?
Well, we definitely plan on going forward with the project. We just may not be able to do as many of the beautification things. You know, obviously, like we said, as soon as about the first half is in, that would pay for the physical pieces to, of at least that initial clearing, all the baskets, all of those things. But there may be walkways or things like that that we would have to X out of the proposal if we weren't able to sell, you know, if she's not able to sell all the advertising.
Is it feasible to just do nine holes? And then as more resources came available, add on the second nine?
I mean, typically, the courses are 18 holes. And the way it's laid out, the actual second nine are probably easier to put in than the first nine, to tell you, you know, just being serious. At least the middle holes are the ones that are the most difficult to put in. And so once you've put that expense in, and the baskets, obviously, you want to order all of the baskets at once, because that's how we get the best price, so.
Okay, right.
There, the appeal, if there is a nine-hole course, the appeal on it is not as high as an 18-hole course, because they would have to, competitors would have to go through the course twice, and it's just, it lowers the, the actual value of the course.
Just let it go. Yep. See that same tree twice.
Yeah, or hit that same tree twice.
I've done that. Any other, any other questions?
I was just going to say, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make it to allow them to move forward.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I, I would just like to say, Caitlin, congratulations for your vision in, in making this starting point anyway. And obviously, your enthusiasm for, for helping a challenging issue, which is obesity amongst all of our population here in Oklahoma. And, and I'm, if this comes to fruition, I'm sure it'll go a long way in, in reducing that, that obesity level. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and submit your vote, please, for the approval.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Okay, unanimous approval for the Disc Golf Course Project. Hopefully by spring, we'll all be out there throwing those discs. Very good. Item number five, discussion possible action regarding ordinance number 3277, which is amending the existing sales tax ordinance to add a three-quarter cent sales tax.
Yeah, what you guys have before is an ordinance that we call, and a sales tax election on February 9, 2016, and the amount of three-quarters of a cent for 15 years to be utilized for capital improvements. That rate right there would put us at the state and regional average of sales tax, all combined sales tax, for both local, county, and state functions. And from the presentation I made to you guys at our last workshop, staff is envisioning this as a tool to help out all of our departments and to help out the entire community, to have the infrastructure necessary to create a higher quality of life and to be able to use it as development in the future to lower the cost for all of our citizens, even though that may sound like an oxymoron, is that you're raising tax to lower cost. But at the end of the day, we do have needs within our community that will be either placed through utility rates or via sales tax, and that's what we're offering here today. Because as basic mathematics tell you, if our population stays the same and we have no more investment into the community from outside of the community, the actual cost of doing business goes up. So all those citizens that are currently here will have a higher cost of living. So that's what's being proposed, and that ordinance and resolution, that's on the next agenda item, will call for those election of that three-quarter cent for capital improvements for 15 years for the City of Guthrie.
Which, which one comes first? The call for the election or the?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. Just making sure, because it seems, they're connected, I'm a chicken/egg thing, which one comes first?
The ordinance doesn't go into effect unless the voters approve the ballot.
There are some specific projects that are envisioned in this quality of life. We've talked about different quality of life projects, things to enhance the pools, splashpads, possibly a sports complex, various things along those lines.
Yeah, there's been, there's been projects that are proposed by staff, wastewater treatment plant, plant, fire ladder track, sports complex, all those things that you just mentioned. We will be having a survey go out, and that's being developed, and hopefully by the end of this week will be completed. That allows the community as stakeholders to also submit information into council to help not only the initial projects and the decision-making process, but also to help lead us in what direction they'd like to go, because this is a 15-year term. The projects today may be different than the projects that are of need 10 to 15 years from now. So we'd like to have at least a grassroots-level understanding of where the citizens like to direct us in the expenditures of monies for capital improvements.
And that survey is going to be with the utility bill?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now, is we'll be placing that in the utility bill, send out to all of those customers that are inside the corporate limits. Then they'll be able to return that with their markings of what they feel like is, in their opinion, what is most needed or not needed at all. I have different levels. We'll take that back and distribute that out to council as we go forward in our decision-making process.
That's an important part of this process, getting, getting the input from the citizens as to what they feel are important projects, quality of life projects.
Very much so.
Enhance this community. Any other, any other statements by, if you have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any, any further discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous to go forward with the ordinance 3277, amending our existing sales tax to increase it by three-quarters of a cent. Item number six on the agenda, discussion possible action regarding, regarding resolution number 2015-23, calling for the holding of a special election.
Same song, second verse.
Okay. So, does it set a specific date?
Yes.
February, right?
Yes.
February, February what?
9th.
9th. Okay. Any, any other questions?
So moved.
Concerning?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And that's Cheryl's birthday, by the way.
Please submit your vote.
All votes are in.
See the vote. Unanimous approval of resolution 2015-23, calling for a special election. Okay, item number seven, discussion possible action, resolution 2015-24, purchase of approximately 15.63 acres of land adjacent to our Summit View Cemetery. And this is for the possible expansion or expansion of the cemetery.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a meeting with Ms. Edwards Cantrell. She is the owner of the property. She currently has that property under contract with another buyer, but she did state within her contract that the city has the ability to step in and have the right of first refusal on that 15.63 acres of property. It is directly adjacent to our cemetery. We will need to have an expansion of the cemetery at some point in time. It may not be in the immediate future, but will be, definitely happen in the distant future. And she's asking for $4,000 an acre. That's below the mean and median average of the cost of acreage in that area. And we were bringing, the staff is bringing that forward today for us to go forward to purchase that property.
Okay.
And I will say one thing on that resolution. I would ask that if you guys, Masha, make a motion to go forward, that you guys would amend that resolution to also state that we'll be using stabilization funds for that purchase.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of Bruce?
This, you know, I doubt we'll have this problem, but you have to have a higher threshold to vote for that, right?
Yes, we do, five sevens.
Yeah. Is that a, is going to be, is that the same motion, or is that going to be?
That'd be the same motion, yep.
Do you want a motion to?
Okay, I'll accept a motion in a second to, so moved.
Second.
On that resolution. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
With a stabilization fund, understand?
Using stabilization funds for the purchase of, of the land adjacent to the cemetery. Any further discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the vote. Unanimous approval of that resolution 2015-24, to purchase a land adjacent to Summit View Cemetery using stabilization funds. City manager report?
No report.
Other items?
No.
City council comments? Cheryl?
I do. First of all, thank you, Caitlin. I think you did a great job, and I'm very impressed with what you've done. Congratulations. And number two, I think that our streets department has done an absolutely phenomenal job on the trashy trees that have fallen, and I want you to tell them all that we are very grateful for that.
I certainly am.
Because it was very quick. They were very fast in trying to get things picked up and moved over and out of the way. Kudos.
Pass that on.
Councilman Taylor?
Okay, I got to say it. Oh, you won. You know how much that irks me. Also, the Pollard, I think, is starting up its play, the Christmas, territorial Christmas play. And so if you haven't got your tickets, you better go check, because I think they may be sold out already. And we're going, I think, this Sunday. I'm not sure. I think it says Sunday, but I haven't been in a while, so I wanted to go and see. Hadn't changed a whole lot, but they say it's great.
Same story.
Yeah, same. And then the territorial governors, is this weekend, is it right? Saturday? Okay. So it'll be the same time the Kiwanis are going on. You can pull away for a few minutes, run over there. I think Freddie says he's going to win, so you never know. But then we can run back over here then, so. And, trying to think, I think that's it.
Councilman Edward?
I'd just like to echo Ms. Pageant in saying thank you to the street department for taking care of things so quickly, and has a lot of hard work real quick to get that taken care of.
Parks helped.
Well, I'm glad they thank you. Please let them know. Other than that, that's probably pretty much it for right now. Everybody be safe through this holiday season, so.
Okay, Councilman Taylor?
Can I have another one? Hey. Z, I'll just go with Z.
Well, I just wanted to say to Caitlin that that was very impressive, what you did, and, you know, approaching things like that is a great way to approach life, and we all appreciate that. So thank you for bringing that to us. We've been waiting for it, actually, and cheering you on. And to Maxine, again, the streets are, they did a great job. I can't say enough. I don't know if Bruce wanted to say anymore about that, because they got a pickup schedule coming out to pick that up. I'll let him have a second on that if he wants to, cutting everything up into four-foot sections and all that kind of stuff. So, anyway, thanks, Maxine.
Councilman Bathory?
Yeah, we drove around right after the ice storm, checking on my tree, which I had trimmed. I didn't lose a twig. But there was a lot of destruction going on, and driving around in the last couple days, it doesn't seem near what it was, and I think you guys have done a great job. And Caitlin, hand, had the hats off to you. You did an awesome job on this, and you've, you've got a, you've got a great vision for this town. Proud of you.
Councilman John Wood?
I just echo thanks to, you know, Maxine and her team. In advance, actually, for the, Z already mentioned, there's going to be a pickup schedule, and so I'm not sure if that's already out in their, in their bills or anything like that on the pickup schedule. It's probably not yet.
We've, we've had it advertised throughout all the local newspapers, but I'll reiterate too, is that we were giving all the citizens this week to be able to clean up their property, cut up the debris, and place it within the right-of-ways of the streets. As of next Monday, we will be picking up all of that debris in the southern part of the community that's south of Industrial Avenue. And the reason for that, that was the least, that was the area that was least affected by the ice storm. So we're giving the, the western portions and the eastern portions on the north side of Industrial a little bit more time. So the second Monday after next week, we'll start on the west side, then after that, we'll go to the east side. So we're counting, we're hopefully, I want to have everything picked up before the first of the year. But if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact my office, and Andrea will be able to give you directions. And if there's anybody out there that has any disabilities or have an inability to go out and cut up their own limbs, let us know. We've had a couple of different offers from individuals and groups and organizations that will come out and help people out. So again, contact Andrea in my office, and we'll be able to distribute that, that information out.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the transfer station, I think, is free for a brief time.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, any, any citizen that wants to get their property cleaned up and have it, they can take it directly to the convenience center, and all you got to do is be able to present a bill from the City of Guthrie, and they'll be able to direct you to a place that you can dispose of that debris. And it's limbs and branches only, and we won't be taking sofas, refrigerators that were damaged by ice or anything like that.
And the other thing is, I want to note that, you know, thanks for Maxine also. She obviously had to have insight or foresight and some interest in helping with this project and, and, you know, and these got, you know, Caitlin really stepping up with her mom and with these guys on the, doing the, you know, with the disc golf club course for a year and a half planning. That's the thing a lot of people don't realize is, when it comes to really, you know, stepping up and making a difference, it takes a lot of planning, and it takes a lot of prep, and it takes a lot of patience. And a year and a half is a lot of patience, so I'm really excited to see this. And at first, I was a little skeptical, it was like, oh, you're just, you just put this together, but the reality is, you put a lot of time, and you can tell from this packet, you put a lot of time and effort. And I really see a lot of success coming out of this project, because just the sheer detail. The downside is fundraising, but I think this committee will come together once they kind of see and, and understand what it's all about. I think they're going, we're going to have to, have to advertise it and make sure that there's some information out there. But, you know, it really shows that when folks get together, have a great idea, can really make a difference in our community.
Yeah, I think Mr. Long owns like six different businesses. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Third of the course right there.
Yeah, it's great.
I'd like to also say that Cody Mosley helped with this, and also Courtney Macklemore with the county help. So there was a lot of people that were involved in this planning.
A lot of coordination.
Yes.
It takes a lot of coordination, a lot of, a lot of people passionate about a certain goal to get it done. So I appreciate you guys for doing that. Thank you.
Great job on that. Couple things, just to shout out to, I don't know which Baptist church, but I understand, maybe it's all the Baptist churches together got, got a men's group, they call it the Chainsaw Group, that is willing to go out and saw limbs that came down for, especially for elderly handicapped individuals that can't, can't get out. So shout out to that group, and also to the Red Cross and the First Presbyterian Church, I think, that opened their doors to, for shelter during this time, and people were out of, out of electricity, didn't have electricity or possibly gas, and so for, because of heating problems. And so for, because of heating problems, First Christian Church and the Red Cross set that up. So that's really, really good. The territorial Christmas parade this Saturday, which includes the lighted parade, the inauguration of the territorial governor, and the lighting of the Christmas tree, that's this Saturday. That's, that's postponed from last Saturday. Sure hope that the community all gets out. It's a lot of fun. Be really interesting. You want to see who the territorial governor, of course, is going to be. And, and then, of course, there's the, there's the open houses, there's the number of, of homes in the community that have a territorial Christmas tour going on. So, and, and the Victorian Walk on the, on the two Saturdays. So lots going on in our, in our community and, and it'll be great, great fun. Get out, support them. Okay? Very good. We are adjourned.